At nine weeks incentive trip, we did a board game party. And then we played board games for, it was about an hour and a half, and then we watched a movie and had popcorn and pop. Christmas parties were held in the classrooms on Friday, December 17th before releasing early. And that was also our Christmas band and music programs, and I thought the kids did a phenomenal job. Mrs. Hope always has an exceptional program. The honor band, the all-area honor band was this past week. It was Friday and Saturday. We had seven sixth graders picked. Five went and participated in it, and I had never been before, and Smith said it was really pretty impressive. I was very impressed by it. They had an elementary, a junior high band, and then the high school band. And we had two high schoolers picked, but one was second, Caitlin Rich. She represented us, and they did a phenomenal job as well. And we kick up our first basketball games of the year tomorrow at Oakine. And then after this week, we have four games left with Timberlake, Oakine again, Fargo Port Supply, and Bayside. Basketball homecoming is the league of January 24th through 28th, and it's also National FFA Week. They have many activities planned and dress-up days as well. Pre-K and K-8 students, they're going to take a field trip to Woodward on January 25th for a Steven Byte concert. And then last thing I wanted to say is I appreciate you guys. This month is School Board Recognition Month, so anyway, I just wanted to tell you thank you for all you do. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Smith is driving the bus, that's why he's not here. But of course, we won a mission, the trophy auction's tonight at 6:00. And then our local show is February 15th. So we'll be doing the native test this year, January 27th. It's ELA and math for eighth graders. She mentioned Caitlin was in honor band last weekend, this week. And of course, basketball, we just finished up a tournament. Our boys finished sixth, and our girls finished seventh there. We've got a junior high tournament that starts off at Sherre Mutual today, I believe, at 11?
Yes, this morning. Boys played on, and the girls didn't play. They play it right after.
So that is what Smith had sent me. It is Board Appreciation Month. You know, you gotta kind of have a thankless job, so we do thank you for the job you do and showing up every week if you can, for sure. We will find a time where we can feed you and your family. Usually do it, try to do it at homecoming, but hey, we're throwing a king in our hands there. So we'll find another time, but we will, we will have some kind of reel for you guys. Baseball field, it's coming along. You guys drove by, we've made some progress. We are running out of time, though, so. But we're spending every extra minute we can down there, but it is, we are making progress, so. And then last night about dinnertime, we just finished dinner. We got a call from Freedom, and they asked if we'd be interested in entertaining co-op with them next year as far as sports. I don't know what you guys feel on that. I think right now they co-op football with Moreland, and they've been co-opping basketball with Allen Cleo. It's a long run. Yes. You know, I don't know if it's, it's up for debate whether it's all summer or none, basically. I know with Allen Cleo, I believe they split their home games, some with Freedom, some with Allen. Football's played that more. A big thing, re-ADM, because we have to add their ADM to ours. So where does that put us? And that's what I've got to do some research. We don't want to jump the class and get into taking, taking on Freedom. But you know, just what are your thoughts on doing something like that? What would you like to look into?
My concern is same as yours with the ADM and where that puts us. I guess preferably if we did something like that, I would like to see everything still just be easier.
That's, that's kind of me. I mean, I don't like the idea of splitting our home games. Anyway, we'll kind of look at that and keep you guys updated on what we find and where we're at on that. Came to me yesterday evening, so I haven't had much time to wrap my head around what that would look like for us, but.
Do you have any idea of the numbers that they send now?
No, I just looked at their ADM this morning, and they were at 13. We're at, and that's nine to 12, we're at 459. So football, I can tell you, 78 was the cutoff for class B. So, you know, 59, you know, 13.
Those are very close.
72. Now, those fluctuate every year, so if they get a little spike, or we get a little spike with this transfer for a rule, I mean, we're, we're a couple of kids away, so that's, that's a game that we have to be looking at year in, year out, when you're getting close, before we agree to do something. But basketball, you've got a little more room. Just finished basketball, it's '84 and '86. Boys were '84, cut off, girls '86, out of line. And then I have not got to baseball or softball yet.
And just re-district the sports football, right?
We'd be fine for this year, but you know, next year, when they, you know, this next year, we'll be fine. The year afterwards, they'd look at those ADMs for the following year, but anyway. Just to keep you updated on that. Looking at our expenditures for the year, for the month, even on what we spent last year, on the year, we're down about $30,000. So it's a wash, is what I call it. Revenue, revenue we're showing, we're up. A big thing is we've collected about $230,000 more in April or year-to-date than we did the previous year, but keep in mind, that's just moving aside the bay, aside the bay. Gross production is up. We've collected $120,000 this year. Last year, we collected $123,000 total, so. Still down from years prior by quite a bit, but again, keep that in mind, so. And the same thing, if you look at our year-to-date collection, we're at 1.6. Two years ago, we were at 3.4, so that's still a big drop. Last year, we got hit hard, as you, as you know, so. But as far as our cash balance, we are standing firm. Building fund expenditures on the year, we're up about $6,000, and our collections are up about 40, and that's based on that little one. Flipping it over, looking at child nutrition, our child nutrition, we're up about $4,000 in there. Again, everybody knows why we're sitting as good as we go there, but. And daycare, we are down about 16, but again, if you look at the previous year, where we were down, you know, almost 30, that's a big gain, some strides we've made there, so. We've got some positives and some losses, but overall, we're sitting pretty strong with our finances.
Okay, thank you. Discussion and possible action to approve the contract to employ Jody Hall, General Contractors LLC pending bond.
All right, Joe Hall said we used with our last project, I guess the only one that wanted to come back and deal with me from.
Smartest thing he ever did, Scott.
Sorry. Chris Richardson is here representing Joe Hall. You guys know him, he was here kind of our last, last project, but he'll kind of talk the ins and outs of what they do and what our project is looking like. If you want to take the floor, you've got two minutes.
I'm just told I have nine.
Don't I even look at nine minutes?
I said that before you guys got through. Don't cut me off. That ain't fair. So I'm ending the budget out before we get hired, because it's usually backwards, but you guys kind of know how we are. I want to say two things. One, I appreciate the work and the opportunity to be back in this room. We're not perfect in Miami, but I enjoy working with Scott, and you guys got a good group in here, so. And John, our architect, has done a good job, and I think he will do a good job. So moving forward, you guys know this is an overall project budget. It's a starting spot. Yes, I am conservative. By the time you guys pass in April, it gets funded and John designs it, this budget's eight months old. And I don't know what gallon of milk's going to be in eight days or price of metal. So I'm going to be conservative, like you guys know me on the front end. Within that number is architect fees, no finance fees, and we have a 10% contingency built in that number. So I'm trying to plan for the worst, because I'm the one that's got to produce it for what I say I'm going to. You guys know that it would be publicly bid in this room on a night that Mr. Klein decides. Everything would be competitively bid. Wouldn't be a success without the county and city, which I assume will help us again. I don't want to be presumptuous of that, but that's a, it's a big savings to you guys. Be silly for not to. But like I said, that's not my decision. So everything will be competitively bid, and we'll set a guaranteed max not to exceed like we did on the previous one. So any questions about that process or seeing the risks? Our contract hasn't changed, our fees are the same as they were. Has it been three years?
Four.
2018, I believe, is the last one. God. Same, same deal from us. I've just gotten older and fatter. So, and we're conservative, and stuff has gone up. It hasn't gotten any less. That's the downside of the world, as you guys know. Three-dollar fifty cent diesel. So, and I know Scott needs to talk numbers, not me, but to get, you, you guys got to navigate what you want the increase to be. I could massage this all day long, as can John, the architect, and get some money out of it. But if the perception out of this room is, we don't want to raise our taxes more than 2%, we got, I mean, that's fine. And Scott needs to say more than that than I do. But you guys got to decide what, what to pass and what won't, not me. So I didn't mean to take, take away from Scott, he needs to talk numbers more than me. But questions on my budget or comments, you guys speak up, you know you're not going to hurt my feelings. And I'm making some assumptions at this point, too, guys. I mean, we're very preliminary on this bus barn. We've met twice. And you guys have exhibited, I think, there's any question about that. And you know, obviously have been talking about it in this room without us here, so. But questions, thoughts? Or Chris shut up and let John show you the pre-pictures of the bus barn?
Again, stuff can change here, like I said. We adjust our bus barn, the crews will adjust. Again, talked about having a special meeting where we can hire a finance guy and our resolution for our barn, and we'll have, have an exact number by the end of the week. Give us time to, to get that done and then know the exact impact it'll have on our, on our military, on what increase. And like I said, we'll try to keep to a note of 2% is my main thing, but the least amount we can raise it, the better we go. And again, that, what I showed you was staying flat, whereas, you know, we've got windmills should be coming on, they will be coming on, but you know, our, our big question mark is everything with the protests, so. So it's all there. You know, worst case, that's not worst case, but I'm saying the scenario could be we lose some on protest, which we expect, but we make it up, and when it's coming on, Ryan, it's a wash, you know, so. Right now, we're not approving the budget, we're approving the contract. This is, this is kind of, yeah, don't.
That's where the start with that, Scott, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is kind of, just a cock before the horse, I guess, kind of deal where you get to see this, but normally we go with the contract and.
I wanted to get something in front of all of the Scotsmen that get in front of you guys a little early, probably a little premature. I don't know if premature, you know, like Scott said, everything's preliminary, we can change anything you guys want, but I wanted to get something in front of you to be realistic, because you guys might say, this crazy, Scott, what I'm doing. And that's okay, but better known now than later, so. Any questions or thoughts or?
It's definitely a crazy name.
Well, I hope you don't say that to us. Thank you all. We do it for a second.
Get overloaded and see where this contract could be. Motion. Second. Gary. Second. How you doing, Gary?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. Okay, discussion and possible action to approve the contract to employ four of the Mers, Hanyi Architects pending bond.
Okay, we have John Mers with us today. He's who I've been working with. He's there at Bayside Bean, and you know, our last one was the city, and we had our ups and downs, as typical with any project, but felt that's the way. Made it a little closer to home, and so talking with, with Chris, this company kind of becomes recommended, one that's close to home, and he feels like will do us a good job, so John will kind of let you take it over from there and take his props.
Sure. Well, I have plans, but if you like, I can open those and show them to you. I've just got to introduce myself, my name's John Mers, with corporate Mers and Hanyi Architects. We've been, Ken, my partner, has been, he started in Enid in about 1972 or so, and I joined him in 93. We've been doing work primarily in Enid and surrounding areas. Done work in Atlanta and Alba and Northwest Oklahoma. But we have, just recently, the last several years, we've been trying to get a little bit more opponent impact in the school district. So when this opportunity came up, we're really excited about it. We've enjoyed meeting Scott and getting to see what he has in mind for the school, and we'd sure like to be a part of working with you. We feel like we have something to contribute. We've done a lot of school projects, done a lot of work, not only in Enid and Chisholm School District, but we've also done work in Mustang, and then what comes in other places as well.
When we get our last meeting, I can't mention their website, but you guys can go kind of look around and see some of the projects that were up there. I emailed out plans, they haven't really changed since I emailed everybody those points that I got, so. A rough drawing. So kind of what you've got seen on there, any, any thoughts or discussion on the scope of work that you might be able to answer as far as design or, or anything like that? I mean, now's, now's a good time to ask a few questions if you've got them, standing in front of us.
It's bus barn.
It is, it is bus barn, that's for sure. It's got bathrooms now, come on.
That's right.
Lot of bathroom doors, a lot of overhead doors, biggest thing on the sheet. That's probably the most expensive of overhead doors.
Overhead doors, I think it's a contract.
I think our first design just had overhead doors on one side, but again, pulling through a bus is a lot easier to pull it in, back it up, that kind of thing, so it does make the cost to go up when you're talking garage doors, especially right now. Hardly find them, seems like.
Those are insulated doors, aren't they? Yes, sir. Good question. And it'll be either two, I'm assuming, we, we haven't gotten into the weeds here, and I'm not trying to, to take away from it, but we're obviously going to insulate the bus barn, and I assume a few unit heaters and some exhaust.
Kind of what we were picturing, it would require exhaust, and, and with the bathrooms in there, you could handle bathroom areas with just heat in the bathrooms, and it'll have a plumbing chase that we could make sure keeps heated throughout the year, but or if you, if you like, we could also design it toward to be winterized, but probably simplest be just provide some sort of minimal heating in there as needed, but.
And we're trying to keep it under the square footed, not to sprinkle it, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
So they don't have to jack with that.
It's all bolt together, red iron?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it's a crazy air metal building system. There's any kind of, I'd say luxury to it, or just what I consider kind of a, a good plan with this type of building is we, we went and put a CNU wainscote around the perimeter of the building, and we just found that for, for the cost, you just take it up about a cent foot forward to the top of the doors, keep it from getting, just be up the, the building. That's where it's probably most vulnerable, so.
Three foot inward.
I'm sorry?
Three foot inward.
No, I took the cent foot forward to, to the top of the door. And that also, the interior walls of the storage room and the bathrooms, just kind of makes the building a little bit more bulletproof when you're with kids in there.
And dresses it up, too.
Yes.
See what that looks like, other than just a barn.
Yeah.
Which it's y'all's prerogative, if you want a barn, you can get a barn. And what have to do that wainscote.
Well, it'll, it'll look really nice. Well, the other functionality for that, for that block is, you know, when you're washing it out, you know, metal and water, what tends to happen over time, so that is one practical purpose of doing it, so we can wash out whatever goes in and not have to worry about water standing against metal.
Well, that was some of the thought that Scott was giving, they, they gave us a thought to the idea of how can we simplify the building, not get to where there's a lot of plumbing in there, and trying to eliminate floor drains by just opening this, this slab to, to the doors, which I think is a good idea, less things you have to kind of keep mud out of your drains and all that sort of thing. But the flip side of that is you don't want water sitting down next to the base of your middle building, so that's some of the thinking, at least, in going to get some more durable materials in there.
And we can bid that wainscote no different than what Scott did on the last project. You came back, correct me if I'm wrong, we can bid that exterior wainscote as an alternate, and if you can't afford it, you just don't afford it, there's no harm, no foul. You can come back and do it later, just like Scott did. What project was that? I'm not dreaming that.
The House.
Thank you.
We did it ourselves.
You did it, and that's great. Come back and do the bus barn when you got the funds, don't do the prick right now. Just a thought for an easy alter.
And we can always cut down the height.
Always cut down the height.
Shave, shave some, probably not as much as you got to think, but it'll shave some. Like I said, right now, this is best-case scenario, if bids come in, we can always see where we need to cut. Because, you know, like Chris said, I mean, what, what it's going for now, it's probably going to be increased by the time we get our funds and we put it out to bid. I mean, that's.
It's every day.
It's just the world we live in.
Well, Jordan, your finance guy, I'll tell you, he told us Burne last week that interest rates are going to go up, they think the third quarter.
Third quarter.
Money's so cheap right now.
And that's, and that's one reason why pushing to do it sooner rather than later, because inflation, interest rates, all that kind of stuff is rising. That preliminary budget that, as far as bond that we looked at, was a 3% interest rate right now, they're selling for in the US. So that, that, that's kind of, that's a big savings for us, for, you're talking a million and a half bond, so. Sooner rather than later is, is definitely the way to go as far as saving money. I mean, we can't do it later, but we will pay, pay more. So any, any questions for, for John, when they say, contract? Both of these obviously are pending bond approval. So if bond, bond fails, they, or you don't, they're free.
We offer that to a lot of the schools that we work for, because we understand the position you're in, you're needing to get an idea to present to people, but you don't have the funding upfront, so we understand that. We're, we're willing to take your gamble on that.
Any other questions?
I'll, I'll make a question, too.
Thank you.
Approve our support of Mers and Hanyi.
Second. Motion, second. Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Vote to approve or not to approve the 2122 text vote option. Move to approve. Motion, second. Hey, vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Vote to approve or not to approve fundraiser request for the 2122 school year, chair, NHS.
Chair, many, it's a many-chair camp, and NHS, two counties, but five.
For the fundraiser, second. Motion, second. How you doing, Gary?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, proposed executive session is provided for Title 25OS, Section 307B1 of Oklahoma Statute to discuss quality or resignation received today, discussion of employment of certified teacher and temporary contract for the remainder of the 2122 school year, discussion of superintendent evaluation and employment. The board is turned to open session at 7:55 AM. The members present during the executive session were George Hampson, Gunn, Olson-Zuk, also present, Scott Klein, superintendent. During the executive session, the board discussed these items and no other items. The matter considered as provided by Title 25OS, Section 307B1 of the Oklahoma Statutes to discuss the following: Resignations today, discussion of employment of a certified teacher under temporary contract for the remainder of the 2122 school year, and discussion of superintendent evaluation and employment. Okay, vote to accept or not to accept resignation received today.
We have one, Ms. Erin Place, is resigning, and she has taken a position at a school campus.
I'll make a motion to accept, turn it places. Second. Motion, second. How you doing, Gary?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. Okay, discussion and possible action on the contractual term, contractual term of superintendent employment of 22, 23 school year.
Move to give superintendent 8% pay raise, $1,500 performance stipend, and extend his contract for three years.
Second. Motion, second. I vote yes.
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 Okay. Any new business?
I have no new business.
You're turning motion to the chair. I'll make a motion. Here, the motion. The matter considered as provided by Title 25OS, Section 307b1 of the Oklahoma Statutes to discuss the following, resignations today, discussion of employment of a certified teacher under temporary contract for remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and discussion of superintendent evaluation and employment. Vote to accept or not to accept resignation received today.
We have one, uh, Miss Erin Place is resigning and she has taken a position at a school campus.
I'll make the motion to accept, turn place. Second. Motion, Kelly, second. Hey, vote, Kelly.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Okay, discussion of possible action to employ certified teacher under temporary contract for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Casey Allen, Trey's wife, who is currently in Florida, thus, we're gonna hire Casey, Casey Allen.
Motion to approve. Motion, second. John, second. Hey, vote, Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Okay. Discussion of possible action on the contractual term, contractual term of superintendent's employment in twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Move to give superintendent eight percent pay raise and fifteen hundred dollars performance stipend and extend his contract for three years.
Second. John, motion, Kelly, second.
I vote yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any new business?
I have no new business.
You're taking motion to the chair.
I'm making the motion.
Gary, motion, second. John, second. Oh, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.